Well, to me, what crime means having the desire to help those in need and the urge to constantly strive and improve. My inner borough career was filled with many great experiences and memories. I met many exceptional teachers that tried their best to help their students succeed and genuinely care for them as well. I also got to meet many great friends that are like family members to me and I truly enjoy spending time with them.
Hi, my name's Sean. I started my journey off at Interboro at the kindergarten and then went to Warden. Um, in high school, I just had the best of times being involved in so many different activities and clubs. And being the class president, I got the opportunity to interact with all the teachers and the students. And we just really enjoyed ourselves. My favorite memories at high school would probably have to be homecoming. Or the buck schemes because we always had so much fun and everyone just had their school spirit.
Hi, my name is Danielle Scott. I used to attend Prospect Park Elementary School and as a senior at Interboro. I've participated in marching band, art service club, German club, yearbook committee, National Honor Society and freshman mentoring. Next year, I plan on attending Westchester University for environmental health. And my favorite parts of Interboro have always been, you know, the dances, hanging out with my friends and just getting to know amazing teachers who really support me and have pushed me this far in my high school career.
Hi, uh, I am Lauren Reader and I'm really thankful for the experiences I've had the past four years at Interboro. Uh, I had the privilege of learning from some really amazing teachers and the opportunity to join a bunch of awesome clubs and meet a bunch of new people and just have a great time all around. So I'm really thankful for that. Uh, the next four years, I plan on studying at University of Maryland where I will major in journalism. Um, and I know that Interboro has prepared me well for that. So thank you, Interboro, for the past four years.
Hi, my name is Taylor Newsome. I'm from Tynecumbe and I'm going directly to university to study biology. I am so grateful for my time at Interboro and for all the teachers and staff. Everyone really pushes you to do your best and genuinely wants you to succeed, which I think is very important. And it's what helps me do well and achieve all of my goals. I also met some really great friends along the way through different activities and sports that really made my time at Interboro very memorable and fun.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Klesnick. Uh, I went to Tynecumbe Elementary School. Um, during my four years at Interboro, I met a lot of teachers who helped push me to do my best work. Um, I made a lot of friends and I gained a lot of experience that I think I'll carry throughout my life. Um, I'd like to thank all the teachers and the staff and everyone else who helped make my time at Interboro unforgettable. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cassie Gallagher and I'm the top 5% of Interboro High School's 2020 graduating class. Next year, I plan on going to Temple and I want to major in marketing. To me, high school has been important in making friends and making memories. Joining clubs has offered me a lot of opportunities to meet new people. And taking different diverse classes has led me to a lot of experience. I think teachers are really important for the high school experience, especially during hardships like we are right now. Helping us through it and helping us say commit it to our scholarly adventures. Thank you. Once a buck, always a buck.
Hi, I'm Alex Gada and I started attending Interboro in ninth grade. And I will be attending Quiddtown University in the fall for criminal justice. Being a part of the Interboro community has really been an amazing experience for me. It allowed me to meet so many of my close friends. And the teachers here truly push you to try your hardest and to do your best. And without the help from them or my family, I would not be where I am today.
Hi, my name's Emily Gosley and I'm going to be attending Delaware County Community College next year. Oh, one of my favorite things about Interboro is the teachers and the staff. They always show you with such respect and love and as if you're their own child. It makes it such a great experience. And I'm gonna miss that once I go to college next year. Um, we're going through a pandemic right now and they're all also doing a really great job.
Hi, my name is Amelia Schneider. I'll be going to Temple University for environmental engineering. Um, I've been a member of all the high school bands, uh, lead freshman mentor, yearbooks editor, member of the Envirethon. I've also joined a variety of other clubs throughout my time at Interboro. Being in the top 5% has been a goal of mine for as long as I've been in Interboro. And it feels amazing to be finally recognized for all my hard work. I never would have achieved my goals if it hadn't been for the amazing teachers and counselors at Interboro. Especially Ms. Baumholt, Mr. Meck, Mr. Siroka, Ms. Catino, Ms. Ferragasso, Ms. Salula and Ms. McGee. Who helped guide me throughout my entire career and have prepared me for my next steps outside of borough.
Hi, my name is Natalie Petito. I'm a senior in Interboro High School. Over the past four years, I've made countless friends and have gotten to know so many teachers who have had such an impact on my life. The biggest thing I've learned is to take advantage of every opportunity and live life to the fullest because you never know when your life will be put on hold because of the global pandemic. So go to every school function, say hi to your teachers and cherish the friendships you've made. I'm proud to be part of Interboro's top 5% and attending Whiner University next year and majoring in history and education.
Hello, Interborough. As you can see, I made it in the top 5%, which is phenomenal because I didn't even think I'd make it in the top 100. Um, I've been in the theater, the marching band, the jazz band, the concert band. Heck, I've been in the rubber band. Uh, jokes aside, my time at Interboro has truly been something special and I'd like to thank all of the friends, you know, students and teachers who I've met along the way and have helped me get to where I am now. Tommy Bosch signing off.
Good evening. I would like to bring the May 20th, 2020 meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call please?
Ms. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Faricchio? Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Alonso?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chavone?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here. Uh, just for the record, uh, Ms. Faricchio called and said she'd have to be excused for tonight. Okay, um, Mr. Evans, could we have the invocation and the pledge please?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant that his board and their deliberations this evening, the spirit of wisdom, truth and knowledge. What is undertaken always begun in charity and peace. And what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name. And I would also ask us to continue to pray for everybody, uh, our staff, teachers, uh, students and community that are impacted by this virus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice and law.
Okay, uh, moving on, uh, do we have any public comments? Any?
No, sir.
Are there, Mr. Evans, I would just like to ask the attendees that are in the meetings. I do see that we have some community members. Any of, uh, the members of the public would like to make a comment?
I can't see them, Bern, so you're gonna have to.
I can see them and I don't see anyone requesting that. Ms. McBride, did you want to make a comment? Ms. McBride, did you want to make a comment?
Not, no, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Long? Would you like to make a comment?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Everyone else, uh, is an employee of the district. Okay?
Okay, uh, moving on then to number three, Mr. Evans?
Motion 3.1, that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on April 1st, 2020 be approved.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next up, we'll have our solicitor's report. Mr. Pupio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry, the unmute button didn't work quickly enough. Uh, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone as well. My office, along with, um, the general day-to-day operations uh, of the school district and any legal issues that, that we have been handling, we have paid special attention to the upcoming reassessment. Our office has, um, has begun the process of bringing all the superintendents as well as business managers uh, together, uh, to discuss, uh, hopefully, and bring the county together to discuss the pending reassessment that is scheduled to take place on June, on July 1st with effective numbers. They do not affect this year's school district budget. They affect next year's school district budget. But since the school district usually has the largest piece of the pie with regard to reassessment and with regard, excuse me, with regard to a tax bill, the school district is usually the taxing entity uh, that pays the most attention to the numbers when they come into place. So we have been reaching out and have been speaking directly with the new solicitor for the Board of Assessment Appeals, the new county solicitor with regard to practice and procedure, as well as the issues with regard to this reassessment. COVID has, as with many other things in the education and legal world, um, turned things on its ear. So things that have been done in the past are not necessarily the practices that are going to be, going to take place in the future. Um, and we are in the process of continuing to review those numbers to ensure fairness to the district and to ensure fairness to your constituents, your taxpayers and your residents. Because a reassessment is supposed to be fair. That's the most important thing. So if the numbers are fair and valid, um, then all parties are participating on an equal playing field. We're in the process of determining that, working with your, working with, with the other districts, the other solicitors, as well as your administrative superintendent and your, uh, and Mr. High School, your chief of finance, your business manager. So that would be the solicitor's report, uh, at this time. I thank you for the opportunity, uh, to be here virtually this evening. And I look forward to seeing you all in person shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pupio. Moving on to, uh, number five, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir. From the Office of Finance, motion 5.1, that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending March 31st, 2020 be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 5.2, that the attached treasurer's report for the month ending April 30th, 2020 be approved.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 5.3, that fund disbursement dated April 22nd, 2020 in the amount of $6,666,869.83 be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, uh, Mr. Evans?
Motion 5.4, that fund disbursement stated May 20th, 2020 in the amount of $3,328,939 be approved.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Uh, do we have any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
No? Okay, we'll move right on to number seven then, personnel.
All right, uh, from the office of personnel, motion 7.1 to 7.7, starting on page two and ending on page three, that the following personnel actions be approved.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Movements carry eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Uh, oh, from retirements, motion 8.1, Carol Leary, teacher at Norwood School with 33 years of service to the district be approved for retirement effective June 12th, 2020 under the terms and conditions set forth in the current agreement with the Interboro Education Association.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments from the board? Uh, myself, 33 years. She deserves to retire. God bless her.
We, and we have three more retirements. I just, out of respect, would like to read all three.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
We can, then we can, um, vote, uh, and comment on all three, uh, the remaining three all at once.
Okay.
Uh, motion 8.2, Stephen Lennox, teacher at the high school with 27 years of service to the district. Be approved for retirement effective June 12th, 2020 under the terms and conditions set forth in the current agreement with the Interboro Education Association. Motion 8.3, Susan Mays, teacher at the high school with 23 years of service to the district be approved for retirement effective July 6th, 2020 under the terms and conditions. And motion 8.4, Carla Vitale, payroll specialist with the administration building with 22 years of service to the district be approved for retirement effective July 31st, 2020 under the terms and conditions set forth by the agreement.
Okay, second.
Second, the first one.
Already, um, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board for any of the retirees?
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations to all of them. They, uh, they, again, you see the high numbers of years that we have employees. That's because, once they get into this Interboro family, they don't want to leave. So, uh, um, I can't thank them enough for their service to this district. Uh, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Uh, next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion 9.1, that the Board of School Directors approve the high school ATSI plan for the 2020-21 school year.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Special Education, motion 10.1 to 10.3, that, uh, the following items be approved.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Movements carry eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion from the Office of Technology, motion 11.1, that the Board of School Directors approve the schoolology software. Costs not to exceed $30,499.98 for 14 months. Expectes expenses to be paid from continuity of education equity grant.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Chavone, you don't have nothing to say about this grant?
No, I made the comments on Monday, so I felt like they stood.
Okay, I'm just checking. All right, uh, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. If I could just say, again, you know, the grants that this district receives because of our administrators are, they're constantly working towards and putting, you know, our name out there and writing things for it. Uh, again, we can't tell you how much we appreciate it and we need them. We really need them. So they do go to good use.
This is a big step forward for the district also.
Yes, yes. Uh, next up, Mr. Evans, number 12.
From the Office of Finance, motion that the following items be approved, 12.1 to 12.3.
Second.
Motions have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Movements carry eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Hey, uh, the next five motions are roll call motions. Motion 13, that the Board of School Directors approve the general operating budget of Delaware County Community College for the fiscal year July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, in the form and amounts presented at this meeting totaling $93,302,788. Interboro School District share is $460,722.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 14, that the Board of School Directors approve Bernice Clark Dickerson to be reappointed to the Board of Trustees of Delaware County Community College for a six-year term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 15, that the Board of School Directors approve the election of the following individuals to serve as members of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for the term of July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023. From Garnet Valley, Tracy Kurwoski, Havreford, Susan Minji, Marple Newtown, Barbara Harvey, Springfield, Margaret Ravinsky, and from William Penn, Joanna Hopkins.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 16, that the Board of School Directors approve the fair share fee M O U between the Interboro School District and the Interboro Education Association collective bargaining agreement July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 17, that the Board of School Directors adopts the attached proposed final general fund budget for the fiscal year July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021 with proposed expenditures of $71,272,444, requiring an increase of 1.3361 mils over the current mileage rate, resulting in a tax increase of 3.5% for a new total mileage rate of 39.5128 mils.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, Mr. Phelps.
Yes, Mr. Chavone.
I was saving my comments for this motion. Um, I just wanted to emphasize that this is a procedural vote and that the final vote on the budget will happen next month. We still have department meetings and a finance meeting to work on a final budget. We have one month more to decrease the deficit and decrease any potential tax increase. I know we'll highlight more, um, next week, or next month on the budget impact on taxpayers, employees and students. But I would just want to highlight some things for the public as the finance chair before we vote on, uh, the proposed final budget. First, we are not saving a substantial amount of money due to the shutdown of our schools. Our salary and benefits, which are approximately 80% of our budget, are still being paid because it was mandated by the state. Yes, some line items are seeing a savings like utilities, supplies and transportation, but others are seeing an increase because of technology and food distribution. We will not, we will have more concrete numbers next month. Second, in terms of our budget, approximately 90% are mandated costs. Salary and benefits, special education costs, charter costs, debt service, these, um, Delaware County Community College, which we voted on tonight. These are costs that we are required to pay. The other 10%, um, we try to control as much as we can. This year, we're holding off on some curriculum purchases. We're looking at decreasing supply costs. We're shuffling around staff so that we are not replacing, um, as many retirees. We need to look, and we also need to figure out what, uh, the school year next year is going to look like, um, in terms of technology. There are tough choices that this board has to make and none of us make it easy, um, make these decisions easy. I just asked the public that if you have feedback on what choices are important to you, to let us know. Um, because we have to make tough choices and we don't make them without careful consideration. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chavone. Uh, any other comments? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries eight zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Last is the election of treasurer to serve for the period from July 1st, 2020 until June 30th, 2021. Uh, as per section 404 of the Pennsylvania School Code, this is a roll call motion only if there's more than one county.
Okay. Um, I would like to, uh, call for nominees.
I nominate Christine Alonso.
Okay.
Second.
Any other nominees? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to close nominations.
That's removed.
Motion has been moved and seconded and, uh, at this time, uh, everyone in favor of, uh, having Christine Alonso be our treasurer for the upcoming, uh, year, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Yeah, you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, excuse me. Do we have any old business? Uh, hearing none, we will now hear from our superintendent, Ms. Riley.
Thank you. Uh, for the past few months, the Interboro School Board has approved the retirement of the following teachers and administrative staff, Marge Brown, Coach Lennox, Carol Leary, Sue Mays, Murray Schiff, Kate Claire, Linda Mullin, Carla Vitale and Teresa Distillio. This is always a bittersweet time of year, especially under these circumstances. On behalf of the board and administration, we bid these dedicated employees a fond farewell and best wishes in their retirement. The wisdom and knowledge that they have shared with their students and colleagues will be missed in the classroom, in our hallways and in our offices here at the administration building. Throughout my career here, I've had the privilege to work with these teachers and staff in various capacities. I can't say enough about their commitment to our students and the Interboro community. Congratulations to each and every one of you and remember, once a buck, always a buck. Registration is going on, even under these circumstances of distance learning and the buildings being closed. If you have any questions or need information, please visit our website. Materials can be sent to you through the mail. You can also request a time to come and pick up a packet from Ms. O'Shea. Also, they can be printed, and we do have a mailbox that is available out front of the administration building for packets to be delivered. So we would ask that you would continue to check the website. Parents will be receiving information coming out early next week to all of our families regarding the schedule and procedures for the pickup and drop-off of student materials and devices. Also, the waiver to provide breakfast and lunches to our students has been extended through the summer with an end date of August 20th. Therefore, we will continue the current plan that has been in place since the shutdown. Parents can sign up on the website as usual. Also, due to the Memorial Day holiday, breakfast and lunch pickup will be on Tuesday, May 25th, rather than Monday, May 25th, Memorial Day. Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Do we have any board members that would like to comment?
Comment, Mr. Phelps.
Yes, Mr. Chabon.
First, it would be remiss of me to say, tonight would have been when we would have recognized the top 5% with the dinner and recognizing all the students. So I know there's the YouTube video that's going around that's highlighting the top 5% of the graduating class, so if anyone wants to check that out, it is on YouTube. We always look forward to that night, and it's a shame, you know, with circumstance, not being able to do that. And then to just bounce off of what Ms. Riley said about the teachers, I was thinking of walking with my daughter today and seeing Interboro teachers dropping signs off to the graduating class was really cool to see how much, you know, the students miss the teachers, the teachers miss the students, and just seeing the smiles on some of the kids' faces when they saw the teacher stop, go out of their car, and put a sign on their lawn was really cool. So it's awesome how much we're pulling together during such a crazy time.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Whereas on March 30th, 2020, Governor Wolf issued an order closing schools indefinitely, the Interboro School District will attempt to hold all future meetings remotely until further notice. Please visit the Interboro School District website at www.inberorsd.org for further information. On Monday, June 1st, 2020, a finance committee meeting will be held at 7:00 p.m. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held on Monday, June 15th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. Our next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held on Wednesday, June 17th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. At this time, I would like to just thank the administrators, the teachers, everybody, how hard they've been working through the times that we were going through. Myself, I have a daughter graduating, so it's just hard, you know? They're missing so much. But our administrators and our teachers in this district, they're going way beyond their needs that they have to, to do what they can for the kids, and we do appreciate it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.